Went to call to order the regular public meeting of the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, June 25th, 2024. The Board of Supervisors did meet in an executive session on June 11th, 2024, and prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of personnel, litigation, and real estate. Want to first open it up to public comments. Comments on agenda items will be taken when those items are discussed by the board. These are questions for items not on the agenda. Are there any public comments? Can just come up and state your name?
I think this is my only opportunity to make my public statement.
I won't know until you say it.
Not on the agenda.
Okay.
Anyway, I just wanted to...
First, we...
...people online.
Take this? Okay.
And just let us know your name and address.
I'm Irene Lewis, and I live at 513 Montgomery Road. And I'm here to let the Board of Supervisors know about a problem that the neighbors are having due to the noise coming from the Whisickin Middle School. Trying to follow up with the appropriate people to get this noise problem resolved. But the AC unit in the back of the middle school is making an incredibly loud noise that travels across the field, through the woods, and to our houses on Montgomery Road. And I did make a recording of the noise. I'll play that for you now. I can get it to work. Works. I guess I'm gonna have to look for it on my phone. But... I realize that maybe this isn't the Board of Supervisors' job, but I wanted to bring it to your attention because neighbors have been communicating with the school since 2020, when they moved the AC unit from the roof down to the ground level. And since 2020, we have a thread of emails asking what's being done about this problem. And we just keep on getting messages that it's being worked on. So I'm concerned that this is not going to get resolved, and I would like any suggestions or help or comments that the Board of Supervisors has to help us with this problem.
So how often is that noise?
Where does that happen, middle school?
This is on in the track field behind the wall. So I'm just walking through the field, recording this noise. It happens Monday and Friday whenever the AC unit was being used on the second time.
Is that what it sounds like from your home?
It's not as loud from my house, because I'm like down the street. I'm down the street, so it doesn't sound as loud as in the field. But when, and I also have other recordings, but when I was walking along Houston, for example, you can hear it when you're about approaching the middle school. I can hear it in the woods. I have recordings of the sound in the woods. And then I can hear it, it's not as loud, on Montgomery Road. We have talked to the, we have emails with the Director of Buildings and Grounds. I have contacted several other people. I have contacted the police. I have contacted Mimi Gleason.
That's Mimi right there.
Thanks, you can tell all about it. Okay, nice to see you.
And so we do, she, Mimi is Township Manager. She has apprised the Board of your concerns. And from the last update that she made us aware of, it seems that the school is in communications with you. The school has addressed it as far as ordering some type of apparatus to quiet the noise. There does seem to be some time that it's going to take in order to get the apparatus, but they themselves have been doing a noise study and have agreed that the noise is loud and that it's probably too loud and are looking for ways to mitigate the noise, from my understanding. Mimi, please let me know if I'm missing, if that's accurate. So it does seem that the school is hearing you and is taking steps to resolve the issue. Mimi's probably going to keep us apprised of any concerns that you may continue to have as it progresses, but it does seem like the school is aware of the concerns.
Yeah, they're certainly aware.
And potentially addressing the concerns. I can't say how long it'll be before they are resolved, but they are attempting to resolve it at this point. Unfortunately, we can help as far as interfacing with the school district and making sure that someone hears you. It is outside of, well, we have, I think, the communication that the...
Oh, with Mimi.
Yeah, with Mimi. The Township Manager has tried to interface with the school.
Very responsive inside town.
Yeah. So I mean, I think that she will continue to be in contact with you, the neighbors, as well as the school, and we can provide any assistance that we can. Unfortunately, it is not our HVAC unit. It is the school, which is another government body.
Right.
But since we are apprised, we'll do our best to try and mitigate and to ensure that the communications still do continue in our free-flowing.
Uh huh. I appreciate that. So anyway, I did want to bring it to your attention.
No, thank you.
I did want to make a public comment so that now the public is aware.
Yeah.
It's in the notes of the meeting tonight. And I appreciate your time and attention. And...
We appreciate you coming tonight and sharing it with us. Thank you. Thank you. Any additional public comments? You just come forward. I don't know who was first. I apologize. Just state your name and address.
My name is Richard Gilly, G-I-L-L-Y, resident of 525 Montgomery Road. That's two houses closer to the disturbance that Ms. Lewis highlighted for you. I've received the same communication from Ms. Gleason. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and the Board for hearing me tonight. What I want to, I guess, add to Ms. Lewis's comments is, as far as the township is concerned, this noise, which is extreme, is taking place during the after-school, or I'm sorry, during the summer camps where children are playing. And my concern is, there's been no sound study that has assessed whether the level of noise that you're hearing, which is akin to basically a sawmill operating full-time, whether that level of noise might be harmful to our children who are attending the Whisickin Middle School. So I'd like you all to be aware of that concern. I enjoy being proximate to the middle school and the high school, except for this sort of issue. So I would hope that unlike the last four years, these measures that we're being told very vaguely about will have some concrete information. For example, apparently, there's been an order for some baffling. Strangely, it takes the entire summer for the baffling to be received. After the summer's over, the problem goes away. The need to follow up goes away. I am surprised that it takes 12 weeks to receive some insulation. I would like to see that there has been positive steps. An order has been placed. I've requested Ms. Gleason provide me with a suitably redacted copy of that order so that we, as neighbors in Montgomery Road, can assess that real, concrete measures are being taken to address this problem as opposed to words, which we've been hearing for the last four years.
Mr... Go ahead, sir.
If the order was made by the school district, we wouldn't have the order. Let me just...
I'm not asking for you for the order. Thank you.
I think you asked Ms. Gleason to get the order, redacted copy of the order. We wouldn't have, she wouldn't be able to have it. It's not, you'd have to get it from the school district. You could ask the school district that very question.
Understood.
File a write-to-know request. They're a government entity and...
Understood. Thank you.
I mean, it's just not, it's not, we wouldn't be able, we won't, we don't have...
All right. Well, if Ms. Gleason is aware that the order has been placed, it seems to me that she has some ability.
She was told about it.
Okay. And so she cannot follow up for a copy of the thing she was told about?
I don't, I don't think that's probably within her purview to do.
But it is within her purview to write an email about what they're doing.
Well, you, you have, my understanding is she wrote the email in response to your email. Irene's email, pardon me, Mrs.'s email. So that's why she wrote the email. But again, it strikes me that what you were sort of asking for is proof that the school district is doing what it said it was doing.
Yes.
In essence, you don't want us to take the school district's word for it, and you're not going to take the school district's.
Not under the circumstances. Correct, Mr. Turcowski.
Okay. So I think it probably is easier for you to get the information from the school district, right, directly? You don't need to go through us.
I'm not making that request of you. My main purpose is to point out to you that if the noise continues for the next 12 weeks, as it might be, my concern is, it's a high-pitched buzzsaw-like whine, and I don't know whether the noise level, because apparently, no sound reading has taken place, I don't know whether that noise level is harmful to children under a certain age who are in close proximity to that noise. So that's my concern.
Did you bring this to the school board?
I've been talking with the same folks that Ms. Lewis has been talking to, yes.
No, I just think that it might be beneficial.
As far as I know, the board does not know about this problem. And also, as far as I know, the board doesn't meet again until August.
It's, there's the possibility that they're not having summer meetings.
Yeah.
Totally sure.
I was dedicating just us.
Yeah.
It's not like they make that once in a summer.
Thank you. Are there any additional? You can come up, sir. You can pick up the microphone if you could just state your name and address, sir.
I'm Andy Mills at 94 Harlow Circle. And I have a statement to read, if you'll bear with me. Sixteen years ago, Riley Livermore enlisted in the Air Force. His path to the military was shaped by his evangelical Christian upbringing and growing up amid the war on terror. He was first commissioned with the Air Force in 2012, and after graduating with a master's degree from the Air Force Institute of Technology, two years later, he was selected to go to Israel for an Engineering Sciences Exchange Program. During his two years there, Livermore researched missile guidance algorithms. But in late October 2023, he decided he couldn't continue anymore. "He has been utterly dismayed by how President Joe Biden and the Department of Defense have been complicit in the slaughter in Gaza," he told The Intercept. So much so that he is in the final steps of separating himself from the Air Force, a months-long process he initiated in late October. "I don't want to be working on something," he said, "that can turn around and be used to murder innocent people. I believe this is a situation all Americans must face. Our federal government is insisting on supplying arms to a country, Israel, to assist them in the slaughter of thousands of civilians, Palestinians. But the majority of U.S. citizens, according to polls, think there should be a permanent ceasefire now. So we have to turn to our local governments to address the urgency of our peace concern. Hence, I'm standing before you now. I must say at the outset that I and all right-thinking people condemn the violence that Hamas visited upon Israel on October 7th of last year, when they murdered 1,200 Israeli citizens and took hostage 250 Israelis. This is clearly a human rights disaster which is to be condemned. The freeing of all the remaining hostages should have the highest priority. But it became clear by the end of the year that Israel was doing much more than just defending itself, when we learned that 22,000 citizens of Gaza had been killed largely through aerial bombardments by the Israeli military. The idea of proportionality as defining a just war had been badly exceeded. The situation for Palestinians today in Israel is dire. The United Nations reported on June 3rd that the Israeli military attacks have killed around 36,500 people in Gaza since October 7th, compared to 293 Israeli soldiers who were killed since the start of the Israeli ground operations on October 31st. And it is well-known that Israel has been preventing food trucks from entering Gaza. Both Amnesty International and Human Rights Watch have documented that Israel for years has conducted an apartheid-like policy that does not allow Palestinians to even have the rights of second-class citizens. You should know that I recognize, I formally submitted my request earlier on May 10th, that the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors consider a resolution to support an immediate ceasefire in Israel and Gaza. I received an answer on May 13th from Mimi Gleason, the Township Manager. "Most supervisors agreed," she said, quote, "that it is not appropriate for a local government body that is not privy to a complete picture of the situation to make an official statement in the form of a resolution," end of quote. According to Wikipedia, though, so far, 73 municipalities across the country have approved resolutions calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. The municipalities range widely in size. While the Board of Commissioners, Board of Supervisors, may not be privy to a complete picture of the situation, as Mimi Gleason told me, still enough salient facts are publicly known to be able to make a moral judgment. I later received an email from one of the Township Supervisors, who told me I could present my plea to the Board of Supervisors at a regular meeting of the Board in the public's comments portion of the agenda, hence my appearance before you this evening. Here is the resolution I would like the Board to consider adopting. Lower Gwinnett Township calls for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Israel and Palestine, an end to the bombing of Gaza, the freeing of all hostages from Hamas, and the freeing of all administrative detainees held by Israel, lifting all barriers to the provision of humanitarian assistance at a scale to meet the full needs of the population of Gaza, the resumption of U.S. funding of UNRWA, which is the United Nations Relief and Work Agency for Palestinian Refugees in the Near East, the rebuilding of schools, homes, mosques, churches, clinics, hospitals, and other structures destroyed in this conflict, and the beginning of a process of repair and reconciliation for all impacted by the violence in the region, including the advancement, safety, and dignity for all Israelis and Palestinians. If the Supervisors feel at all inclined to adopt such a resolution, they could obviously modify any of the points made in the proposed resolution. I would add that since it is known that the Board of Supervisors recently approved flying the flag of Israel for a month, it would seem the Board has already made a statement about the war in Gaza, and to be fair, should not hesitate to sign onto the offered resolution or one similar to it.
Copies for all of you.
Are there any additional public comments? Being none, moving on to building and zoning. This is an opportunity to discuss our positions on pending zoning hearing board applications. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Are there any questions or comments from the public? If you could just come up and state your name and address, sir.
Jim Sinback, 713 Meadow Creek Circle, Lower Gwinnett. There's a zoning hearing that's about to take place on July 11th concerning the Bethlehem Baptist Church. I'm sorry. There's a zoning and Board Hearing coming on July 11th, and I am concerned that it's for a special exception use for religious purposes. The church already has 712 Pembun Pike, and they purchased 835 Dager Road, and they now want 833 to also be an exception. The property 712 and 835 total nine acres of land, which directly abut Meadow Creek Circle. They want to take 833 and make that more religious use, which now totals 13 acres of land directly adjacent to Meadow Creek Estates. The 30 neighbors abutting the community are concerned, what is a religious use? And I understand that may be a zoning board question, but we will be bringing it up then. But I'm asking for the Board, I don't know if you're going to provide an opposition, but to provide representation at the zoning board meeting through a solicitor, so you know what's going on at that particular property of 13 acres of land, because we certainly don't know what's going to happen there. I've asked for a write-to-know to have the application that they've given to the zoning board, so we have a copy so we can review it. But this has all happened so fast, because we were all just notified less than two and a half weeks ago. As of today, they just posted a notice on the property itself. It previously was posted in the church parking lot. I spoke to the pastor. He agreed it was not in a proper place. He moved it as of today. So now it's in front of the house, 833 Dager, so everyone could see where it is, because people that did receive a notice in the mail didn't know where 833 Dager was. They had no idea. They thought it was two blocks over. They didn't know it was right there, right up in the back of our properties. And I think I gave everybody a map of how everything went. So we just want to know exactly what's going on, with a little bit more investigation to get into, but we want to make the township know that there's a total of 13 acres up against $45 million in neighbor properties. And to say that our neighborhood is scared is an understatement of what can happen and what they want to do to that property. Once it's considered religious use, there's all talk of what can happen, and we just want to make sure that at the zoning board meeting, we can have, if we are able to, have certain restrictions, like saying, no XYZ, no this, no that, no building of a new church. They have 12 acres of land. They could knock down that whole area and put everything up. I know there's some zoning thing, but I also understand that in, there are religious exemptions, the Religious Use and Land Act of 2000, which from what I understand is that local zoning boards have little or no control over religious use functions if that actually goes to court. And that was passed by Congress in 2000. So that scares us, that if there's no, right now, there's a control, we don't want to give that control up. We don't want the township to lose that control over that property, of us having to go from special exception to hopefully a variance, and that's where we stand. Thank you.
Dr. Sinback, just to be clear, can you articulate what the concerns are? Is it, is it all of the above? Is it the unknown, or is there something specific?
It's the unknown. There's also things that...
And thank you, we did get your packet that you shared with the interns.
The zoning officer had mentioned that it could be anything from a ministry day camp to a wedding is considered a religious use. It's a venue. It can happen in a neighborhood residential. We've had weddings in our neighborhood all the time, but that's just one wedding in a lifetime, not one wedding by the church for people or the church to have weddings on a fee-for-service basis to generate income. Church has 13 acres of land. That's a lot of money they purchased. That's, you know, almost $2 million in property they purchased, and we don't know why they're purchasing all this property. And is there an end game? Is there a reason why they're doing all this? Do they have, they need to generate income somehow? They just can't have all that land sitting there? And they've also approached 825 and knocked on the door and said, we want to buy your property.
Did you have a conversation with the church?
We are meeting the church tomorrow at 6:00.
Tomorrow at 6:00. Okay.
And I spoke into the pastor twice.
Okay. We strongly encourage everyone that has a zoning concern, have a conversation with your neighbors.
Absolutely. If we would have done it sooner, but, you know, this was originally scheduled for a zoning board meeting two weeks ago, and it took me 48 hours to get things together, and we had that postponed, and they were kind enough to, with the Reverend's help, to get it postponed, so we can ask questions and have all 50 homeowners present here on July 11th and ask their questions and their concerns. Once we find out the Right to Know Act and what their application actually states, and then find out exactly through speaking with them tomorrow what they want to do.
It's hard for us to oppose something because we don't know.
Exactly. I was about to say, we understand it's hard for you to oppose something, but none of us know what we're opposing. But as I said, I'm doing this, you know, backwards, but I was under an extreme time constraint, so I just want the Board to be made aware of what's happening, what's coming up, and that 13 acres is right up butt against an entire wealth of families. I mean, it's all...
No, I can appreciate their concern.
It may be that they don't have a...
Yeah.
It may be that they're just applying land. And the one thing I'll tell you, Dr. Sinback, is that's what religious organizations do. They acquire land. Sometimes it's for future growth, sometimes it's for other projects. Like Ms. Duckett said, the best thing to do when we tell everybody this is, talk to your neighbor. You know, you guys should be taught. And then you'll have a better understanding of what it is, and then you can present your concerns to the zoning hearing board, which is a separate body. It's a separate judicial body that's unrelated, other than they're in the town, unrelated to our...
I mean, if you want to talk about some of the restrictions or some of the hurdles that they would need to go through in order to tear down and develop a new property, our solicitor can explain that a little bit.
As you probably know, there are three distinct processes, processes involved in development of a property. If it's an existing building, there's the zoning process, which deals with use. If new construction was to take place, or sometimes additions to existing buildings, you may have a land development process. And then for things that occur in the interior, like fire, for example, you would have building and occupancy code regulations that need to be followed. So the ability to, for example, tear down a building and build something completely new is a much more complicated and extensive process. It may require zoning approval. It would certainly require land development approval. It would certainly require land development approval.
Can you comment on the Religious Use Land Act of 2000 and how zoning boards have little to no authority for religious, because it determines the discrimination of the boards against the religious properties? And there's not much that the courts can do?
That is pretty much an accurate description. It's a little like cell towers and how the law is involved with those on a federal level. And religious uses, if you've read the act or you've read any of the cases, you know is broadly defined. So religious use could include daycare, could include meeting halls, it could include banquets under certain circumstances. So you've accurately stated what the law provides for. And it doesn't deprive the township of all control. But it does provide that the township cannot create an undue burden on a religious institution that it wouldn't otherwise impose on a similar institution of a nonreligious character.
When you went back and you spoke about wedding venues, since that's a religious use, are we able to restrict that at all?
Any restriction, and because this is a special exception, the law in Pennsylvania is the zoning hearing board can impose conditions and restrictions, as long as it's reasonably related to the application. So it'd be up to the zoning hearing board what conditions they would want to impose on the application. Most conditions are usually worked out between an applicant and the neighbors in advance. So they're presented more in the form of an agreement to the zoning hearing board.
So like ministry summer day camps and Bible camps, that's all considered a restriction? If we wanted to do that, it has to be in the front end, not the back end?
Correct.
So after everything's passed, if they decide if there's no restriction in there, then can they go ahead and proceed with a summer day camp?
Normally, what the zoning hearing board does is they limit the decision to the testimony and exhibits that are presented to them. So I could only answer your question if I knew what the testimony was going to be. But I'm sure the zoning hearing board will do an excellent job of discussing with the applicant what exactly they propose to do on the property. It's not a guarantee that they won't do other things in the future. But at least for purposes of that application, you may be able to restrict what occurs on the property.
And if they wanted to build housing on there or anything of that nature, that also has to go through zoning?
And possibly land development.
There is an article that every Yale real estate student has to take and read. And it's called "Churching NIMBYs: Creating Affordable Housing on Church Property." And it's at Yale Law School, if you want to get a copy. Mr. Kurski, you already mentioned that churches do buy lands.
Thank you.
They've been buying with the Ambition Award.
Thank you.
It's 81 pages long, so I didn't print it. But on the second page, like maybe the extract is there. And just type it in and Google it, it'll pop right up. And you can read it, and it's entirely, it's long and winded, but it is happening right now in the country. And that's what, another thing we're concerned about. And it seems that when they're knocking on people's doors, asking to purchase their property, that scares us. I mean, that scares us.
I think it's a conversation for you to have with your neighbor. Yeah. They've been good community members, good community partners. I think you having a conversation expressing your concerns is the best first step, instead of starting to act in fear.
Exactly. Well, your own people are fair because it's unknown.
Correct. Yeah, so that's why, once it's known, once it's known that there's nothing...
And tomorrow, we will find that out.
There you go.
I hope. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any additional questions or concerns on pending zoning hearing board applications? Can you just come up? You just have to state your name and address.
My name's Ted Hertz, 728 Meadow Creek Circle.
If you could just pick it up and hold it.
Ted Hertz, 728 Meadow Creek Circle. I'm just, actually...
You can hold it while you talk, I'm sorry.
Hold it up, up here? Take this out? Okay. I'm actually just curious about what is the purview of this group over the zoning board? Or what would be the purpose of coming before this board and talking about the zoning issues? And why does number one say discussion about board positions, that you're the board, right? On pending zoning hearing board application? So what is your position on this pending zoning board application?
So they have, they're a quasi judicial body that's totally separate from us. They act on their own accord. If there was a concern or something that came before us where we needed to take a position and send our solicitor, whether to oppose or in support of, we would need to be able to vote. There would be no consideration unless we put something on the agenda that would allow us to vote to be able to send or not send our solicitor. So it's a, it's an opportunity for us to have discussions about ending pending zoning hearing applications, and for the public to come before us and present any concerns so that we would have the opportunity to vote or to not vote.
Okay, so, so there is no, there is no position that this board is taking on this particular zoning hearing at all?
Correct.
None? So it's just going straight to the zoning board? Despite the fact that, what I think I heard is that if the special exception, I think that's what it's called, right? Is granted, then that gives almost limitless control to the church based upon what we were just told about the regulations around that type of special exception. So the special exception gives limitless control to the church to basically do what they want, although there may be some restrictions on building zoning laws. But we all know that's probably a really simple slippery slope to go down. Yet this board has no position on that.
Well, so the church owns those two properties currently. They're applying for a special exception for the uses of that property.
That's right.
And they might be consolidating?
They are consolidating.
They're consolidating it into one parcel number. So they're already in possession of it. It's already their property. So if this is an opportunity for the public, if you have concerns, to bring them to us to address those concerns, we don't know what they're anticipating.
Okay, so...
And they aren't required to give us a map.
So I think that, that in and of itself is a new piece of information that they're going to consolidate. And they've already applied for that into one parcel. Because of course, that changes all the zoning requirements and setbacks and everything else. Another item is the property, the flag lot that goes behind the church. I forget what the, what's the address of that one?
835.
835?
That's already part of the one parcel that the church owns.
Okay, and that already has a special exception?
Yes.
And is a zoning hearing required in order for that property to have received a special exception?
That happened in 2014?
16.
16?
2016, but they didn't own the property then, so it happened with the...
The special exception for 835 was in 2014. In 2016, the, they came back before the zoning hearing board, which for relief for the parking lot. And in that, in that decision, they, that they were required to consolidate 835 with the 712 Pembun Pike. So 835 and 712 Pembun Pike were consolidated in 2016. And 835, the special exception, was in 2014.
Okay, all right. So just again, so I understand this, they're going to consolidate all these properties into one parcel, which changes all of the zoning setback requirements and everything else. Sure it does, right?
Doesn't change the underlying zoning.
Well, there's no more property lines between the, between the properties.
That part is true.
Right? So a setback from the neighboring property, no law exists because there is no neighboring property. So it completely changes, it completely changes their building envelope, right?
Within their, within...
Within, within the outer boundaries of the newly combined property, which is enormous. So it completely, I don't care whether they own it, that's not the point. I get it, they own the property. So what, I own other properties too. I can't just go and combine them all into one at my will. That's the whole purpose of zoning. That's the whole purpose of the way the township was set up and the way that you guys structured the zoning in this area. There is no need for more, for additional churches in the area. There's plenty of churches in the area. So there has to be a need as well. My concern is that by allowing the combination of all these different properties, that it really opens up the door for a whole different type of construction to take place there. And I'm shocked that this board does not have an opinion on that. That I will say. I'm shocked that the board does not have an opinion on that because theoretically, anything could go there. A strip mall could go there. Because now it's a single property.
The underlying zoning would not permit a strip mall.
The underlying zoning is...
A residential.
So the only, so the church is on a residential?
The church is permitted by special exception.
Which it inherited, I think, from the synagogue that was on there before.
Right, there has traditionally been a religious use on the property.
I mean, prior to it being a synagogue, it was a residential, but this is like back in the early 1900s, it was a residential home. So once it switched from being a residential home to the synagogue, which was, I don't know, with the 80s? It's been a, it's been a religious use since somewhere in the 80s.
So then, but they could take the, the church and extend that property the whole way across?
The actual structure.
Spanning, spanning multiple lots, because those lots are now all one, right?
They would need zoning and land development approval to do that.
Uh huh. And I thought I just heard that once the special exception occurs, it's very difficult to do anything to stop that type of approval of zoning.
It all depends on what the project is. We're dealing with facts that we don't know right now. Dealing with hypotheticals.
Yeah, that's, I mean, you're asking us to oppose something that we don't know.
I'm not, actually, I'm asking, I'm asking you the opposite to not approve. But, yeah.
Send, send our solicitor to object.
Right, there's nothing for us to approve or disapprove.
Yeah, we don't know.
Do we oppose?
But the hea, the hearing is, yeah.
Do we oppose the special exception? And as I mentioned to Dr. Simback, I understand your concern, I get it. But I'll say what we said to Dr. Simback, talk to your neighbor. I mean, before, I, I understand the concern, I really do. But to the points that were just made is, these are hypotheticals. Why don't you just see what your neighbor has to say?
Because we don't know what we're sending our solicitor for, to what, what are we opposing, special exception?
So what would you need to hear in order to choose to send your solicitor? Because the hearing is scheduled for July 11th, is that right? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and that's the hearing where we get approved or denied?
That's the hearing when zoning...
Or conditions are set on it, or there's a number of things that can happen.
That's when the zoning board's going to hear the application.
Okay.
And they're going to hear the neighbors as well as the applicant. That would be the time where the applicant's going to talk about, what they're going to talk about, what their uses are and...
So that is not a meeting where it can be approved?
Usually, it can be.
It can be, it can be. So are you planning to send your solicitor to that hearing?
What are you saying for him to do?
I don't know yet.
That's our dilemma.
Then how can we, how can we know if you, you haven't even suggested what it is that you want? You want us to oppose it, is that what you're asking?
I am asking that it be opposed, yeah.
So now we have it out, okay, good. You are asking.
Yes, oh absolutely, yeah.
On the ground, look, on just straight up oppose it, is there a basis?
Well, I can't give you a basis yet because we don't know, but it seems to be moving pretty quickly that, you know, this is the supervisor's hearing where we would need, I'm trying to figure all this out, where we assume we need to oppose it in order to have the solicitor there on our behalf.
There's two things, okay? Any neighbor, anyone in the township can go and oppose it. You don't need us to do that. Anyone can do that. And if you are opposed to this, done, because this will be your chance. And just so you understand, there's not a lot of delay that can be involved. Because if we delay it on our end, it's deemed approved. In other words, if the zoning hearing board delays it, it's deemed approved. So I understand your concern, and I read Dr. Simback's packet. You feel like you didn't get enough notice. I, I understand that. But you all have to understand that we can only give you the notice that we, if, when we get the application, it's, this is not the only thing that the folks in the township are doing. So we, we give the applica, we give the notice when we can.
No, there's, no, there's guidelines.
There's, yeah, there's requirements under state law. We send it by US man. I don't know, that, that's what we do in every other, with everything that this township has ever done, that's on notice is given.
You probably have to.
And how it has to be given, right? That's the law, we require to, so the suggestion, more than the suggestions, if you're, if you're opposed to this for whatever reason, done, get as many neighbors as you can to go. The zoning hearing board will take testimony and will listen to you. There's a, that's what you all can do. And then the issue is, what is the, is there a position the township is going to take? And we don't have enough information to take a position one way or the other, how could we? We don't have any idea what the church has, if, if they have plans to do anything, they've acquired one. Right, and then 10 years since they acquired 835, has, has, I don't know, has anything changed?
Nothing's changed.
Okay, I don't know, I don't know one way or the other. And I don't live in Meadow Creek, so are, are they good neighbors or are they not good neighbors? I don't know the answer to that question. So you have the opportunity to have your voice heard before the zoning hearing. That's, as does any rest, does that make sense?
Just to share, I'm just going to share personally, I had an experience where one of my neighbors was doing something, and I had to make a determination about if I was in support of it or not, and I had to go. Township did not send anybody. I had to go, I'm a party. You would be a party because of how close in proximity is to your home. You go, you're sworn in, and you give testimony. I would implore everyone who's concerned to go, get yourself sworn in, be a party, and express your concerns. Before, I think if possible, it would make sense to have a conversation with the church. Get out all of your concerns, to talk about all the things that you're fearful of, or things that you want to know answers to. If they can't address that, that's the time to bring it up to the zoning hearing board. We asked them these questions, they were unable to provide us answers. Or we asked them these questions, we're satisfied with their responses, we came to an agreement that these things would be satisfactory to all of us moving forward. I think that that is the best course of action. Because as far as the board, and I'm just going to speak for myself, I don't think I have enough information to make a determination to vote to send our solicitor or not. Because I have no, I don't know what they would potentially do.
Okay, if we meet with the church and we're dissatisfied with the responses given, what is the process that we go through in order to implore you to send the solicitor?
I don't know if we, would we have to reconvene a meeting?
You could, you could email the supervisors just so that they would be aware that you were still unhappy. The board can't take action as far as voting to send the solicitor, unless there was a special public meeting. There's not a scheduled board of supervisors meeting between now and Jan, and July 11th. So you could make the board aware. Any supervisor can choose to attend the hearing and, and listen to it. The board itself couldn't act unless the board decided to have a special meeting between now and...
I, I appreciate...
One thing you said before, I just want to make sure you're clear. If the board voted tonight to send the solicitor, the solicitor wouldn't be acting on your behalf. It would not be acting on any of the neighbors' behalf. They'd be acting on the board's behalf. Because that's, the solicitor represents the board of supervisors. Just to, one thing that you said, it made it sound like maybe he would be there on your behalf. And that, that can't be the case, it just legally isn't the case.
And we, and we, we need to, when we vote to send our solicitor, we, the position is not, I mean, I guess sometimes we say we just oppose it outright. But because we don't have the information about what, for what purpose the church intends to use this property, you know, what if it's a use that, what if you guys meet and you're all very excited about the use, I don't know. But, but it's something that the board would not oppose. If we already voted to send our solicitor to oppose it, we can't take that back. So we, Neil needs to have, Mr. Stein needs to have, you know, the basis for, Neil, it's not, the basis for opposing an application. It's much easier if someone's trying to build a pool within boundaries that they're not supposed to build a pool. You know, because we don't have all the information here, it's difficult for us to sit here and authorize our solicitor to go oppose or support or put these conditions on. We just don't have enough information.
Yeah, yeah.
The other thing to keep in mind is, this is a special exception, which is essentially a permitted use. So the grounds on which you can oppose a special exception are extremely narrow.
Okay.
So the church owns the property. So the church owns the property.
Yeah.
It's a church. Whether they consolidate the properties or not. They're gonna, I mean, they bought the property. Church use, there's very little. Even if, even if we said, we agree with you, we don't know what they're going to do, but we agree with you, we're going to send Mr. Stein, he's going to oppose it. That doesn't mean the zoning hearing board's going to see it our way or your way. It's. In theory, anyone could have bought eight thirty-three or eight thirty-five. Or eight twenty-five or seven sixteen, anybody can buy those properties. The, the thing I'll say is, I've gotten to know the folks at the church since I've had this. Decision. They've always been decent, reasonable people. I would be really surprised if they're not going to be reasonable with what you're concerned about, I mean. Again, I, to, to sort of take Dr. Simbeck's point, I get the fear of the unknown, but it's just that, nobody knows, so. You know, I think before the panic sets in, and I understand, this is most people's single biggest asset, I get it. Have that conversation tomorrow. I, I'd be surprised if they're not reasonable.
And please utilize, reach out to us and let us know how it goes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Say that the.
You gotta pick up the microphone so they can hear you online.
We all, we go to the meeting tomorrow and they say everything's going to be. Good, we're satisfied with what they say, and we go to the zoning board meeting. And things come out, let's say hypothetical, that they want to do according to religious use. They want to do weddings on that open field. And. The zoning board says we'll take that under advisement, at that point. Could we come to you and say, hey, now you know what the church is going to do? Can you oppose that?
I don't know if we have the ability to.
Cause now you'll know exactly what.
Where the zoning board makes a decision.
Correct, they have forty-five days to make a decision.
At that point, uh, if the record is closed. There's no opportunity to present further testimony. So the zoning hearing board would have to agree to keep the record open.
Okay, could we do that that night?
You could request that of the zoning board. But, but is your hypothetical. You meet with them tomorrow, y'all agree. This is what they're going to do, this is what they want to, and the, what they want to include is weddings, and then they go to the zoning hearing board and they totally change their mind.
Uh huh.
Sure, that's a hypothetical, but.
That's not how they have.
If they're going to tell you, they're, you know. They're.
I'm.
That would be, I, yes, that is, you could ask that right now.
I'm just thinking five, seven, eight years from now, what's going to happen.
But I think if you build a relationship.
Will be built in there.
Yeah.
Like that's what you guys are going to, you know, ideally tomorrow, you'll agree and you'll present your agreement to the zoning hearing board. And whether it's a religious use or non-religious use, this is our council always, talk to your neighbor, work it out with your neighbor, that's, that's best, right?
Sure.
So.
But I think if you build a relationship with them, if you have an already formed one, having that conversation and letting them know. What your concerns are and talk about the wedding. Talk about all of those things.
Okay.
But if their, if their plan is they want to do weddings and build a mega church and do all those things, they'll tell you. And, and then that's a different conversation.
Okay. Understood. One last question for Mr. Stein, in special exceptions, they have seven items listed, do all these seven items they have to meet?
No.
They can just.
The law says that they have to meet only the objective criteria in the ordinance, uh, there could be dispute as to what's. Objective and subjective. Uh, but generally speaking, about half of those items, I don't have it in front of me. About half of those items are objective and the other half are subjective. So they only have to prove the objective items, and then the burden of proof shifts to anybody who would oppose the application. To suggest why it would not be appropriate uh, to grant the special exception. So again, it's very narrow, limited burden of proof that they have to meet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or concerns on items pending for the zoning hearing board? Just get your name.
Hi there, Stephanie Harding, seven thirty Meadow Creek Circle.
Brian Brown, that's seven thirty Meadow Creek Circle.
We, we, we directly.
We directly butt up against that property, the, their larger property that was recently acquired.
Yeah, she goes, we're prob, we're likely out of Meadow Creek Circle, I think we are, the most directly affected by this. Um, as it stands, they are, they already are our neighbors behind our property. And uh, before even going any further, I do want to, um, I want to echo what you guys have said, they, we've met them, they're, they're nice people, they seem like nice people. Um, so. Our concerns um, aren't about, you know. Them being good people or not, it's just kind of just uh, much like what has already been said. Um. First, I want to make it clear, we do oppose the special exception, that's what we are asking for. And our biggest concerns are. We have young children, we have a twelve and a fourteen year old, uh, middle school, getting ready to go to high school. And I think it's the, the unknown, which was already spoken about, um. Not knowing what they're going to do over there. And, yeah, just as examples, it could be a safe haven for abuse victims, drug addicts. It could be soup kitchen, it could be any religious retreat. Which results in heavy human traffic, strangers coming and going in our backyard. Um, as, as I said, they're already our backyard neighbors, but we feel like we have a nice buffer, we have a big berm there. Um, their parking lot and the church is well, well away from us. This property is not, it's, it's. It's right next door to us. So that we, we, again, if you see our property at seven thirty, we then have them behind and alongside. And again, for me, having young children, that heavy human traffic, people coming and going is a huge concern, huge concern. Um. We, we actually have experienced, since we've, since we've been there, we've owned the home since two thousand nineteen. We've already experienced something that was kind of, you know, we were like, huh, you know, it just one of those things that makes you go, huh. Um, January of twenty twenty-three, they had a, a funeral over there. And it was like a motorcycle gang funeral. Um. Tons of motorcycles, you know, uh, all this stuff going on and. It was the first time that we've experienced any, like I said, heavy human traffic like that, I mean, it was all up and down Dagger all over, it was, it was a lot. Um, and it was the Thunder Guards MC Motorcycle Gang. So like, cause you know, we saw the badges and everything and, um, we Googled it, I mean, there, it's an outlawed motorcycle gang funeral. That took place in our backyard. Um, it's just those kind of things, again, with the unknown, having young children. With that happening, it's uh, it's scary, that's our concern and why we would like it opposed.
It really doesn't appear that you guys are really that interested in, in opposing those kinds of things, cause that truly could happen, right? It could be a drug rehab or a motorcycle gang.
Could oppose it and succeed and it will still happen.
Yeah, cause it's a church.
It's, it's a church, so I, and listen, I, I get it, I have kids, I understand. But if we oppose it for eight thirty-three. And let's just say we. The zoning hearing board agrees, that won't change what happened in January twenty twenty-three, it can happen tomorrow.
Well, sure, agreed, but it wouldn't be. As close, as surrounding, as engulfing, because now they own everything, not only just behind us, but then alongside of us.
They owned it.
Well, well, again, I take that back, they do own it.
Yeah.
But they can't use it at this point for that, that purpose.
But did they use, did they use eight thirty-five for that purpose?
What's eight thirty-five?
The church parking lot in Dagger, church parking lot that's filled over.
It's, yeah, yeah, it, it was, it was, there's a lot of people, I, I, I mean, if they stayed in those boundaries, I don't know, I couldn't say, they were all over, you know? Um. That's, that's what it was, again, it was just, it was their first time even experiencing anything like that, we have met them, they do seem like nice people. Um, I've gone over to the church a couple of times just because I, I needed to, you know? Um. Uh, it's, it's not, this isn't about them being good or bad people, it's about not knowing. The, the, the very open possibilities of what they can do. Now, not, not even just behind us, and, and a good, again, good buffering distance from us, but also all around us.
Well, it's not a question of what they can do today, it's what are they, the pastor will change two years from now and a whole different board of. Deacons there, who knows what, that they really would want to do.
Man, I think if you meet with them and ask them to agree to certain conditions, maybe that will ameliorate your concerns, I don't know if it will, it, it sounds like it may not, but. To me, that would be the first step, right, to have a conversation and say, would you agree not to do X, Y, and Z?
Cause I think we would have a hard time trying to stop a, a funeral service that happened in January, it would still happen the same way it happened in January, regardless of if we oppose it or not. Because the church.
That's, that's the tip of the iceberg, right, so that's.
Yeah.
The drug rehab facility for that particular motorcycle gang could be there beside us. You're, what you're saying is, you're not going to stop that, that can't be stopped.
Drug rehab.
Why couldn't it, why not?
Why couldn't it be a safe haven?
You're saying that's a religious purpose?
It's a religious use.
Safe havens for abuse victims, for drug addicts.
Safe haven is different than I think a drug treatment, kind of for substance use disorder.
Those exist in the township.
We do have them now.
They don't exist across, behind me.
They very do, right across from where you live.
Right across.
Yeah. I, I, well. Right now.
Exactly, it's, it's.
It's in your backyard.
It's not, not truly in my backyard.
This, if you, if you, again, looking at the map, we are directly connected.
Let me see where you are.
I got it, you're, you're right, they.
Right there.
Both sides, I see it.
It's already, again, we feel safely buffered from anything they want to do over there at this point. Um, letting them then extend that, extend that, it's, no, we no longer do, we, we no longer feel we have that buffer.
So if, um. You would like um, to have them not get the special exception at all, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there any situ, um, um. Situation in which you could collaborate or, um. You know, make an agreement. Uh, okay, we won't oppose the special exception, which I understand from Neil is difficult to do, but instead. Come to an agreement on the things that you don't feel comfortable about and negotiate that with them before the zoning hearing board.
Absolutely, we, I mean, we are not, we're, we're open to, as long as they can, as long as there's some way for them to be held. To what they agree to not do, sure, we can't have them just simply say, oh, okay, we will not have a safe haven for.
So you want it in writing?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, well, I think that's.
Yeah.
Uh, open to negotiation also.
Yeah. Those are part of the conversations that you would have with them. When I, when we're saying express your concerns and your fears when you're meeting with them, those are the things that you need to bring up, like, hey, we are your neighbors, we live close. These are the things that we're concerned about, whether it be a wedding in the yard, or being an open tabernacle, whether it be a safe haven, whether it be treatment for substance use disorder, whether. That's what you have to talk them about, but I think that you also have to realize that we as a board. Are limited in what we can oppose as it relates to permissible uses for homes, so whether that be. A group home for individuals with intellectual disabilities, whether that be um, a facility for individuals to get substance use disorders, we would be discriminating. Against any of those individuals who have a right to receive those services if we were to openly oppose them.
Even without the, even without the special exception. If, 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 if they don't get the special exception and they say eight thirty-three, we want to have a, we want to have a group home.
We can't oppose it.
That's permitted in residential. This, the township many years ago went through exactly this, where the township opposed it. And it was overturned by the court.
It, it, it's the accessible use for an individual to, everyone has a right to live, and so you don't have the right to restrict where and when. People can live, so the very type of thing that you're talking about preventing, I think you need to talk to the church to make sure that they understand your concerns. But we would not be able to oppose it.
It, it's truly not, again, it's not just, it's not the full extreme of, you know, biker gang funerals and um, safe havens for drug addicts. It's, it's any, even, even, even a wedding, it's any. Heavy human traffic, strangers coming and going. All behind us, alongside of us all the time, I have children. I have children, and that's a huge, that, that's the biggest concern for me, I have a twelve and a fourteen year old, and all I can kind of picture in my head is strangers coming and going. Right there in the yard next, right outside of my fence. Right, right, right where my kids, you know, shoot hoops at the top of our driveway. That's, I mean, it's a huge concern. And again, it's not, it's not the biker gangs or the, the drug abuse safe havens, it's, it's anything, a beautiful wedding, you still have strangers in our backyard. Alongside of our yard, coming and going, whenever, I guess, whenever they really feel like it.
Yeah. I mean, I, I mean, unfortunately, it's hard for, the church owns both of those properties, without the religious special exception, they still will own those properties. Um, this, they've owned seven thirty-five, not eight thirty-five, and, and the main church address.
But without the exception, there's certain things they cannot do, correct?
Well, they already have the special exception for eight thirty-five.
Right, we're not, we don't have.
If they combine those properties, they inherit the special exception.
Yeah, is that a fact?
No, that's not how.
Okay. Okay, well.
No.
So again.
Before the zoning hearing board seeks it.
And I, I get your concerns, I ha, I have little kids too, and I have the same concerns, I know you were just giving examples about the biker gang, yeah.
Right.
But our, our problem here is what information is lacking in terms of. We have to vote whether to send our solicitor to oppose, but we don't know what we're opposing. Um, and because there's very limited circumstances where we can impose, oppose a religious special exception, we need to have a basis to do so. And right now, we don't, we don't have the basis, cause we haven't had those conversations with the church. And I'm glad you guys are having it tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
Let us know how it goes, I mean. They come in and say they're going to do a strip mall or a mega church, or they're going to have all of these things and they're going to disregard all of your concerns, and they don't care that you have little kids, and. They're going to have weddings and, let us know, you, you know, I mean, and, and then maybe it's extreme enough that. You know, the board decides we have to have another meeting and we need to talk about, you know, authorizing our solicitor to go and, and oppose this now, because what they've disclosed they want to do. Is, is, now we have the basis, right, that at the moment, we don't have a basis to oppose it.
Right, I, I would ask that, that part of the basis be the fact that we oppose. The additional heavy human traffic and strangers so close to our property, that should be part of the basis, I believe.
And, and I think you can share that with them, like, ask them, what are your plans for this, I mean, can you make sure that people are coming and going on this side of the property, can you make sure that. You know, my house is right here, can you make sure you're not, you know, using this driveway or whatever it, you.
Let, let me ask you this though, what if they absolutely say, sure, right, absolutely, we agree with you and we, we get your concern? But then don't follow that, where, where are our hands tied?
It'll be conditioned.
Condition for the zoning hearing board in an agreement that becomes.
It becomes part of it, okay, it would be in writing. Okay.
Make sure you get it in writing.
That's, that's, yeah, if it's in writing.
Get your testimony on the record, I mean, there will be a court reporter there taking down all of the information, all the testimony. And then it's a part of the record so that if the church comes back and does things that they agreed not to do.
Okay.
As a basis to get that special exemption. You, you, you know, we have recourse.
Then you have a leg to stand on.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I was wondering, are our hands tied if they don't abide by what they say?
If they agree to conditions and those conditions are imposed by the zoning hearing board and they violate those, the township can enforce those conditions.
Okay.
Go to the zoning here, because even if, if you have this meeting tomorrow and they agree, and you don't go to the meeting.
Yeah.
The zoning hearing board doesn't hear that information and get it on the record, so you want to make sure.
Okay.
Um, do you want to say anything? Right, is that right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional um. Comments from the public on pending zoning hearing board applications? Anybody online? No? Very good. Moving on to the review of the township's two thousand and twenty-three audited financial statements, turn it over to Melinda.
Yes, um, can you hear me?
I think so.
The um, the audit for, the audit for two oh two three was finalized, um, we did get a um, unqualified opinion, which means the, that's what you want. Um, the financial statements were fairly and appropriately presented without any identified exceptions, and we were in compliance with generally accepted auditing standards. With what, um. With what really is, we received a very clean audit. We had no journal entries when they came in. Okay, so everything that we had done and completed was correct. The statement is very large and it's very confusing to read through, so I just wanted to highlight a couple of points that I think are important. So basically, after all the transfers were done in between everything, the operating funds had a surplus of around three hundred and thirty-five thousand. The capital funds increased by one point, one million dollars. And the, let me find with, and the sewer surplus was seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. I do want to bring to your attention that the overall of two point one million dollars of the surplus was for a couple of reasons. We didn't budget that. One was we had a, over a million dollars in interest income. Okay, and basically, that is on the reserves that we have because of the interest rates. So it's very important to know that that was there. Also, because we didn't complete in two oh two three the intersection, when we had budgeted for that, that was like one point nine million dollars that was going to come out of the capital funds. So because we didn't spend that, then that's part of the surplus, and that's also why our interest income was so high, along with the interest rates being so much higher. Okay, so that you get a feel for that. Our sewer, of course, meet about five hundred and fifty-two thousand, which you would expect for that coming in, and some of that went into the sewer capital so that we can plan on anything that we need to do for the infrastructure for that. So overall, we did, we did very well. We did have the surplus. Of course, some of that's going to be taken away in two oh two four as we finish this intersection here. But other than that, everything went really well. And I just don't know if you guys had any questions at all after reading the report. There's a lot for me to go over, so I don't want to go into detail unless you have a question.
Always happy with the surplus.
Yeah.
Am I to apologize for that?
I thought it was a very well-written report, and I liked the graphics in it. Those pie charts were great. But yes, I congratulate the staff on such an excellent report, and it sounded like they were impressed with the financial status of the township, so that's great.
Yep, everything went really well. Awesome.
Thank you so much, Melinda.
No problem.
Are there any questions on the audit financial statements from the public? And from the board? Thank you. Um, next up is consideration of the execution of an engagement letter with PFM to serve as the financial advisors for Lower Gwinnett Township. Included in our board packet was a memo from our township manager outlining the engagement letter with PFM to serve as our financial advisor. It outlines information that is included in our packet from PFM. I think the most important aspect is the township does not pay anything to PFM unless the board authorizes and executes a bond issuance. Are there any questions or concerns from the board?
Yeah, I just had one question. So if we do engage further with a bond issuance, it's, it sounded like, by the, my reading, is that they would charge a flat fee for the different functions that they provide? Or is it a percentage of the bond?
Um, I don't think it's a direct percentage of the bond, but the larger the bond, the more complicated it is, the more expensive it would be. So I'd say more sliding scale based on the size of the bond issuance.
Okay, so there, I didn't see any prices.
We don't have that right now. So if you never issued a bond, we wouldn't pay them for anything. Part of what they will be doing is helping us just analyze our capital projects, our capital project plans, obviously, the plans that we're putting together for the Public Works Facility, advise on the step forward, which, and if we're going to go ahead with the Public Works Facility, there's going to be probably a bond issuance then. But then we'd have so much more information about how that would work, what interest rates were likely, the cost of their services. You'd need bond counsel. There'd be a whole lot more information that would be presented to you then.
Okay, so is there a point at which we would say, okay, we got the bill from them or we have the estimate that this is going to cost too much? You don't feel that could be a problem?
The bond issuance could be too much. The cost of the bond issuance could be too much. You all could decide not to issue bonds.
Yeah, that's not what I mean.
Anything, so.
I mean, our payment to this company.
We don't make a payment to the company. They actually take it out of the proceeds of the bonds, okay? And.
Okay, but that's still money that we're giving them.
Yes, but when you're thinking about it, if I wanted to give you an estimate, and this would be very rough, because I asked the same question when we were meeting with them. So between the bond counsel taking a chunk and whatevers, you're going to be dealing with about at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I would say that that's a very good estimate to say that if you were doing like a five million dollar bond issuance and each bond issuance, you have to employ that same type of thing. So you want to spread it, and there's different, there's different reasons why you want to do a certain amount, five, ten, you want to keep it under ten, there's, there's different reasons. But you're going to be looking at about at least, I would say, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for each bond issuance that you do.
And that comes out as, you're saying that we don't owe them that as a lump sum payment? We can spread it out over time?
Probably come out lump sum when the bond issuance occurred.
Is that, I have, so I'm asking these out of ignorance because I don't know. Uh, is that a reasonable amount of money? Is that the going rate?
Yes, that is normal, and that's how it's normally done, yes.
Okay, so, and I appreciate that you interviewed a couple of companies and you like this one, and and they have a good reputation, so it sounds like you feel comfortable working with them. Okay, thank you.
And and just to say again, you're not committing to issuing bonds or paying them anything by doing this. We're just getting them to do, essentially, help us think it through and figure out what we want to do. And then you would, you would have all of that information before you would make any decisions that would make a bond issuance official.
Got it.
Any additional questions from the board? Any questions or concerns from the public? Any none? I can make the motion for us to execute the engagement letter with PFM to serve as our financial advisor. Is there a second? All those in favor? You all vote? Yes?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next up is consideration of the, of proposal for forest evaluation and strategic planning. Included in our board packet was, I believe, a plan by our engineer as well as a timetable from our project manager, John. Should I be turning it over to John?
Yes, please.
But John.
Thank you. So the townships received funding during land development process in lieu of planting trees in many cases over the last few years. So we wanted to take what we have and figure out how we can put that back into the ground in a strategic way. Um, and we've talked to neighboring townships and looked at how they, their tree plants have gone. And it becomes a mix of you want to plant new trees, but then you also want to maintain healthy forest areas, clearing out invasives and vines and things like that. And we have a phenomenal public work staff here, but they can't do it all. So what we want to do is get together with some arborists and experts from Gilmore and come up with a way to really create kind of a list of priority areas. You know, these are the top five areas for getting rid of invasives. These are the areas where we can plant more trees and, you know, have shade. And then also prioritize, hey, we first need to look at safety because these trees we need to get rid of because they're going to fall on a trail or something like that. Looking at all these different factors and say, all right, this is how we're going to create a list with what we have now, and this is how the staff can internally build on this list in the future. And that will then help us decide what we're doing in-house versus, you know, bidding out to other places. But then we also need to have a component of it that says, well, what do we have now? So part of the scope also includes having Gilmore look at a bunch of different township properties and saying, all right, this is the woodland condition of these. These ones are healthy, these ones are not. There's forty dead ash trees here, things like that. Now, we also found out, thanks to Supervisor Rick Neely, that DCNR is also providing a service that does some woodland evaluation. Uh, we don't know the extent that their evaluation is going to be compared to the arborists at a place like Gilmore. So what we're proposing to do right now is to kind of try both on the evaluation side. They will not help us with the strategic plan side, so that is definitely part of the scope with Gilmore. But the proposals in front of you includes Gilmore doing a section of evaluations, and then we have a separate one that we're going to do at DCNR. Uh, that is, there's no cost to the DCNR one, so it's kind of a why not try it kind of situation. But Jim was kind enough to then put in a cost so that if we say, all right, we really need Gilmore to do more of this evaluation moving forward as a price per acre, so we can kind of just keep rolling with that.
What's the, does DCNR and our, is what Gilmore proposing, what DCNR is proposing as well?
DCNR is not giving as clear a scope as Gilmore is. So they're saying they will come and give you a one-page evaluation of a woodland, but they're not saying exactly what will be in that evaluation. From Jim, I have line by line, you're going to get A, B, C, D, E, and F. So the real answer is, I don't know yet. But we're going to have the DCNR people out in about two weeks. They're going to come down and do it, so we'll know very quickly what their scope is really going to look like. Um, from talking to them, I don't expect it to be as extensive as what Jim's folks would do, but it might be a good way to kind of pare down, hey, these areas are fine, you can leave them alone. We really need a deeper dive on these other areas is more what I'm hoping for.
Does it, never looking to take work away? But does it make sense to hear what the DCNR people have to say before we vote on Jim's proposal? Or are you thinking it doesn't matter, we're going to have to vote on the proposal? We're, we're going to need Gilmore anyway. I'm, I'm just trying to get that. I don't, I don't, you know, we've waited a while for this. I don't want to jump the gun if DCNR is going to say, hey, we're going to do it all for free, so.
No, it's a good question. And I think we one hundred percent, in my opinion, need Gilmore for the strategic planning side of this. DCNR will clearly not do that. Um, so what might be, if this works in terms of for the board, we could kind of approve, moving forward with the strategic plan portion, see what the DCNR area gives us in terms of the evaluation, and then kind of stagger the timeline for that. That makes sense.
I think, um, working with DCNR, the times I've spoken with them, they, I, I, I think you're absolutely spot on with what they'll provide. They, they don't provide a, they, they will provide sort of a, you know, a high-level view, but they also will help us connect with funds, I think. So they'll help us connect with funding to pay for the work that needs to be done. But this will not replace what Jim can do for us, and which is very granular and, you know, a very nice outline of what you're going to do. This is music to my ears, by the way.
Yeah, I, all I wanted to add was that that proposal and that scope and then that not to exceed fee at the bottom. If we got started and you started getting maybe more from DCNR than you had anticipated, and it's more cost-effective for them to provide certain items within our scope, then we could certainly have the discussion and, you know, stop doing those items in the scope and just end up billing less than fourteen thousand five hundred. Like, I, we want to get started because we know you've been waiting, but my scope can be amended on the fly, and we just wouldn't do it.
So if if DCNR's report shows, hey, you don't need to focus here and shift over here, we're, we're authorizing up to fourteen thousand and and it could, it could be less, it could be more, and you can still, like, amend and move forward, just not let it hold you up? Is that accurate?
Yeah, you're, I, if you approve this, then you're approving up to fourteen thousand five hundred and ten dollars. If we were going to spend more, we would come back to you. If we're going to spend less, like, all we would need is Mimi's direction to not do these scope items. And as long as we haven't started them yet, then I just, I won't do them, and we won't bill you for them.
Okay.
All my, like, budgets that we give you are, like, not to exceed. If we don't spend the effort, then we don't bill the time.
Additional questions or comments from the board? Can I just ask, do we budget for this? We did? We did, what was the budgeted amount?
I, I want to say twenty thousand, but I would defer to Melinda.
I, I do have a question, sort of similar, maybe to Danielle's. The money that this, that we got from the tree situation in the past where it was over, an unusual payment of over a hundred thousand dollars, is, is that in the general fund? Or is it such that we can roll that in with money to pay for the evaluation and strategic plan to care for the woodlands?
I'm going to defer to Mimi and Melinda on that one.
It's in the stormwater.
It, it, yeah.
Budgeted, my, my line items are combined. So I can't pull out that granular one with the paperwork I have in front of me.
The one that's on the list, if for some reason it's coming up blurry.
Oh, okay.
That's just my eyes, everything else is moving.
Okay, but this is, I think.
I can look in our system, it just takes, there's more stuff.
The testing is what you're asking, is this specifically the fee in lieu monies? Or is this other monies? Is that what you're asking?
No, not in. This, this small amount of money may be already budgeted. But what I'm asking about is that the background to this, at least the EAC's long-range planning and talking about taking care of the woodlands and so forth, that is based on the money that the township gets for developers not planting trees and giving this money in lieu of. So is that, that money has been rolled into other funds, is that correct?
In the cash.
It's in the stormwater?
That's where we have the trees, yes.
Okay, so then, okay, so we can draw from that money to?
Um, yes, and I think last year, um, we received a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from a developer for that. So that's sitting there, that's in the cash funds, and that is there.
Beautiful, okay, that was my question.
And Jamie answered.
That money, I'm sorry.
Jamie answered my question, it's not in the general fund.
It's in the stormwater fund, and there's twenty thousand dollars budgeted, and the tree money would pay for this tree study.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Brenda?
Hi there, Brenda Dahl, I live on Lamey Porter Lane, and I just wanted to let you know, I think this is great. We have, there's so many invasives in so much of the woodlands, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what they say they want to do. And, um, yeah, if we've got, I know we've got all those funds from developers, so it'd be great to have some of that be available to do some work to make our woodlands better. That's all.
Thanks, Brenda.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the, the state of our woodlands, this is not just in Lower Gwinnett or even Montgomery County. The state of woodlands in the whole eastern United States is undergoing really dramatic environmental degradation. So if we can devote ourselves to understanding our property, our open space, and what it's going to take to get us back on the right track in terms of the forest regenerating with native trees and, you know, getting rid of the invasives as much as possible. I, I think that's really important to laying the groundwork for future generations to really have a valuable resource in the Lower Gwinnett. So I really thank you for working on this, and I'm very excited, like Brenda, to see it implemented.
Any additional questions or concerns from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed forest evaluation and strategic plan with Gilmore in concert with DCNR for fourteen thousand five hundred and ten dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you so much. Um, next up is ratification of the, to approve a change order to replace our stormwater pipe under some of the town pike. We don't have a memo on this, I don't know if there's any.
It's in your exec session.
It was in our exec session. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Is this the same thing we were talking about? Is this the same thing we were talking about a few weeks ago, that there was some argument about who's going to pay for this? It falls on us, the township, to pay for it?
Well, right now, our contractor did the work, so we have to pay this bill, $59,222.
Okay.
Like to make a, are there any additional questions from the board? I'd like to make a motion to approve the authorization to approve a change order to replace the stormwater pipe under Summit Town Pike. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is, uh, uh, consideration of an amendment to add Wi-Fi to Penland Woods Community Building. There is a memo included in our board packet that outlines, um, the recommendation, as well as the individuals that were, um, engaged with to do a statement of work related to Penland Woods and to provide internet and wireless. The recommendation is included in a memo format, and it appears, um, the recommendation includes Verizon FiOS, uh, with a firewall built and installed, um, by AllCover. The total project cost is $5,467. That includes all of the hardware and the equipment to get it configured. Are there any questions from the board?
I don't think I have a question.
Okay.
Project service takes fee of $4,100 seems like an awful lot. I don't know how many hours they're planning to spend doing it, but it's three times the amount of the hard. Only comment this, I mentioned this to the chief earlier, seems like when the government is the payor, things just sort of cut up. And I'm not sure, we wanted to put Wi-Fi and a firewall in my house, it would be $5,400. But this is the price, and everyone feels that this is their price. It just seems like an awful lot of what they're asking, what we're asking them to do. Maybe I'm wrong.
No, it absolutely seems like an obscene price, and I think we're being gouged, but I don't think we have any other toys.
Yeah, we paid like 30 grand to change the locks, so.
I mean, all things considered.
I, I mean, I, I don't think we have any other toys. There is no Wi-Fi there. It does prohibit, you know, parking wreck and a whole bunch of other community groups from engaging in like meaningful activity there. Everyone that goes there goes into a black hole.
Well, this is, that's AllCover's fee, right? It's AllCover's.
We need to do it. I'm just.
Yeah.
I mean.
Is there any?
Maybe we need to have a conversation with AllCover at some point, not saying now, but.
But we also may be out of touch, because I don't know how much firewalls I have built in my lifetime. And is that how much it costs to build a firewall?
I don't know, I looked at the scope of work.
I looked at it as well.
$4,100 by, you know, a reasonable hourly rate.
I did get them to drop the price a little bit, it was over six grand.
It was over six grand?
Yes, I did get them to eliminate some things.
What did we eliminate?
I eliminated the plastic box they wanted to put on the wall to hold everything to keep it safe. We're just putting a piece of plywood up on the wall now. And, um, Clint is going to hang everything up in the utility closet and on a piece of plywood. So eliminating that big plastic fiberglass box, cut it down to 5467.
Is the firewall?
So the.
It's just so.
Yeah, the firewall kind of is what will hook the Verizon router up to, and it just gives us a level of protection from like, people being able, like, when we go down there, like, if we had a meeting down there or something, it will protect people from getting into like Mimi's computer or Jamie's computer if they're holding a meeting. It's a level of protection from people being able to access.
That's what I, that's what I understood it to be. So the box that they were talking about was just to cover the router?
The box, yes, it was a plastic, so we were going to have the Verizon, so we didn't, I didn't realize when I went down there with Sandy, that there was like a utility room. So once I spoke with Sandy, she said, there's utility room, let's put it in there. So I went down there and saw it, took pictures and everything, and then I spoke with AllCover and said, can we just put it in this closet on a piece of plywood and then avoid having to, because they thought it was going to be like in the room where people would be, and they wanted to like protect it from being knocked over or damaged.
Decided creativity, what was it?
Um, it was over, it was like another 500 and some dollars, it was like $6,100.
$100 for plastic.
It's probably 10, 10, maybe it was 10, 12.
That's all. I get it, we're the government.
So this is what I got them down to.
So because they are our servicer, we have to engage with them, or is it, is there some other entity that we could engage with?
I don't have to.
We, we probably could, but this has gone on long enough, we need the Wi-Fi, but I, I just think it's more, I, I don't mean to have a sidetrack conversation.
You did.
I just, I, we should try, probably try to be online.
No, I think you are. I mean, the thing, benefit about using AllCover too, I think, is like, they do all of our other stuff, so it's just, you know, rather than, what'd you say?
None.
For, for now, they do, at least. If somebody gets ahold of us. Um, but I, I know this was a hard, uh, and long process, so thank you, Michelle.
Is, is there?
Brad and everybody else, Sandy, everyone else who was involved in, um, figuring this out, because who knew it was so hard to get internet in Penland Woods?
Verizon's coming Monday to install the router, and we'll have Wi-Fi down there. It's just not going to be protected with a firewall. That, I have, you guys have to approve it. And then they'll build it and ship it.
Okay.
And then it'll get installed.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do we know when it'll be running?
It'll be about two to three weeks. They have to order it and then send it to their place and then get it configured.
Okay.
And then it'll come to us.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to. And, and so something I want to be clear, this wasn't budgeted, so this wasn't on our list of things to do this year. So this will, it, it may work out in the end that there's enough money in the budget, but it may be that we're, we're going to have to adjust the budget. We may be a little over budget with this because of this cost, so just wanted to make that clear to everybody before we voted. I mean, we have to have internet in the community center and the township building, it's absurd.
It can't come out of parking wreck.
I agree that we need it.
Can't come out of parking wreck's budget? Never mind, that's neither here nor there. I, I think we'll be fine. You want to make the motion? Is there any questions or comments from the public? Janine?
Yep, um, I don't even, uh, I like can't even say. I make a motion to approve the internets at the community center.
My God. Do we like to make a motion to approve the budget amendment to add Wi-Fi to Penland Woods Community Building in the amount of, oh, what's the total amount? Hold on one second. Uh, I gotta get back to the page. 64, 6, 5467. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does carry.
There's the memo.
Next up is our finance report. Is it Melinda's turn? I didn't have any questions, but I, I'll leave it up to the board if you have any concerns or questions.
No.
I just want to thank you again for highlighting and including a key for us and making sure things are in red. It does make it easier and more accessible to read. Any questions from the public? Seeing none, next up is our township engineer reports included in our board packet. It does outline, um, the time periods of June as well as May. Um, it outlined what was performed last period as well as what is being performed this period. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, thank you so much, Mr. Hirsch. Next up is our traffic engineers' report. Um, it is outlining just project statuses for June 2024. Um, large update related to Spring House intersection, Phase Two. Any questions for our traffic engineer?
I have a, a question, maybe I'm asking the wrong engineer, but, but however the bridges, the one bridge, pedestrian bridge along, um, Bethlehem Pike, there was a issue with the, um, a water pipe or something, has that been resolved?
Yes, it.
It wasn't a pedestrian.
It's a pedestrian bridge al- along Bethlehem Pike. There was a encounter, Ambler Water Main. The design of the foundations has been revised. We're going to go with, uh, micro piles on either side, and we've revised the abutment designs. The, actually, the, the piles were staked out today, hoping that the pile contractor can mobilize by the end of the week, have those piles, uh, drilled the end of the week, the beginning of next week. At that point, we'd be looking to install the bridge the week after the, the Fourth of July. There's, um, PICO and the power lines need to be coordinated and de-energized, and PICO doesn't have availability to have that happen the week of the Fourth, so we're, we're shooting for the, uh, the following week to have the bridges installed. And then after that, I would hope that the project could wrap up in about a week's time.
That's great. It, is this affecting the cost of the project?
Yeah, so what we had talked about at the previous meeting was, I gave you a change order, um, in the magnitude of $160,000 for these changes. Um, where we're at right now, all told, is about $125,000. Um, so it's looking like that's going to be the change order amount, but we're, we're still finalizing just a few items.
Okay. And I think it's going to be such a great, uh, addition to that sidewalk, um, in allowing, um, walkers up and to go almost the length of that end of, um, of Bethlehem Pike. Um, there's just one small section right, um, after the, coming this way, this way meaning what, west, on the Bethlehem Pike that's not covered by a sidewalk. I'm assuming that's in the long range plan. Uh, but at least there's sidewalk on one side or the other, right? So that's great. Thanks for that update.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Thank you both. Um, next up is review and approval of our invoice report. Has everyone gotten a chance to review our invoice report? Yes. Are there any questions or comments? I'd like to make a motion to approve the invoice report, which I stated, uh, as of June 25th, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion does carry. Next up is approval on the minutes from our May 28th, 2024 meeting. Has everyone gotten a chance to review? Are there questions, comments, concerns related to the minutes? From the board? No. From the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the May 28th, 2024 meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does carry. Um, included in our board packet are our supervisor liaison reports. Are there any questions or concerns regarding those reports? Seeing none, staff updates. Any updates from staff?
Just a reminder that this Thursday is the first open house of the Ingersoll House and Barn, uh, in advance of the auction, so that's from 4:00 to 6:30 PM if anybody wants to come check it out.
We, we don't have to register, we can just come?
Correct, you can shop. At the auction, you need to register, but for the open house, you're good.
Very good.
And it's appropriate for us to come? I mean, there's no, okay, Neil, there's no conflict there?
No problem.
Good. Yes, I'd like to see it.
Any other staff updates? Supervisor updates. Tessie?
Um, well, I'd just like to, um, thank, uh, the staff, uh, for getting the, the tree plan, uh, started, and, um, I think the EAC as well as myself look forward to, to that plan getting started. Thank you so much. That's all.
Janine? Uh, just a reminder that the, um, concerts in the park start tomorrow night at 7:00, and they've been moved to Pen Amber Park. We're all very excited, um, for the move, and they will take place every Wednesday, um, from now, or from tomorrow until July 31st at 7:00, so.
One hand. Blake? I don't think we'll see each other before the 1st of July, I want to wish everybody happy 1st of July. How about America?
I did have one thing, I'm sorry, before you go. So I did forward you all an, an email from Leola Hubbard earlier today, where she was recognizing Barbara, Barbara Schwarzenbach and her son James. They live on Old Penland Pike. They've been out cleaning trash and leaves for under the Septa train tracks on Penland Pike. They, when she saw them, they had already collected a wheelbarrow full of, of debris, um, and seemed determined to clean the entire area. So she just passed along, if the township ever wants to reward community services, this is a fine example. Calling attention to it.
I love that.
Thank you for that recognition. Yeah, let's get a citation out.
Sounds like somebody.
Sounds like they need to be thanked.
Of the.
Yeah.
This is time we conversation, when we do that. It's always my favorite, the exact session.
Yeah, how do you feel about that, Mike?
I'm going to thank everybody for coming out tonight and everybody expressing their concerns. Um, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.